I guess this evening, good evening, I'd like to call it or the regular meeting of the Emergency Medical Services Commission for Tuesday, January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Our time now is five P M. I'd like to let me begin with Pledge of Allegiance, please.
So I moved it over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, that was uh, that was used at our town meeting last night, so we didn't put it back. So. Any public comments?
Any.
If you would state your name and your address for the record, please.
Sure. It is Charlotte, Ohio, thirty-seven, Wake of Ridge Road. Wanted to bring the attention as a member and as a board member at the Stony Hill Fire Company, Fire Company that. We had a couple of mutual aid agreements brought to our attention, one by Danbury, one by Newtown. Um, and wanted to make sure I know forwarded already on the Danbury one, I don't know whether Newtown wants to forward it on to you. But you know, for the Danbury one certainly appears that that should be paramedic intercept thing, it should be the town. Likewise, when I look at the uh. The one for Newtown that's between uh the firehouses at Newtown, it talks about things like what happens if they're injured or killed in. Uh why they're doing a call in Bethel and shows to be handled the same way as there's, there's no way that. The companies can write agreement to obligate the towns. So again, it looks like these agreements need to be first and foremost with town.
And and agreed, and we do have the Newtown agreement as well. Um, right now with the town attorney, we're actually working on those agreements. Um, we've noticed that they've not been as robust as they should as well. You know, they don't cover HIPAA, they don't cover a lot of things that we shouldn't be thinking about. So our town attorney is going to go through those and we'll come up with something that works that. Works for everybody. And to your point, yeah, there's a lot of things that would obligate the town to that we would make sure.
Yeah, I mean, most of the stuff they're looking for better appear to be things that the town supplies, like workman's comp insurance and death metal. Those things are things the town gives Stony Hill that we can't sort of put out somewhere else. Um, likewise, you know, they were looking in Danbury's case, they're looking for reimbursement again, our game is with the town, not with whoever the town gets in for mutual aid. Right? This might be Danbury, it might be Newtown, it might be, I don't know, um, could be, could be anywhere. So again. It makes sense. The firehouse was certainly really worked with the town, but using. You know, probably need them, the companies to pay, spend money for something that's not.
Right, okay, thank you. Did you have some comments to make? You started to move your hand. Was it about Newtown?
The attorney has the paperwork, and I think that's where it should be. Looked at first.
And I've seen admission.
Secondary, but.
Okay. Great, say correspondence? Okay. Okay, first off, um, uh. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from the October thirty-first regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Let's start him then, okay. Okay, any discussion? With that, I'll try your minds, all in favor of approving it, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Um, so this is more for a consideration, so I'll just. I'll make a motion that for consideration that we discuss how the town provides emergency medical services, possible review between town agencies. Go ahead, a second.
I'll say.
Okay, all favor discussions? Aye, aye. Opposed, none. And and by the way, this is something we've been doing, and we've been voting on whether or not to discuss some of this stuff. I'm not sure they really have to do it that way, but. So so bottom line is, we we kind of um. Have a little lull with the holiday, um, talking about how we're going to look at whether we're gonna, you know, combine. Uh ambulance service in one P S A, you know, separate agency, or if there are possibilities of us doing some sort of. Agreement between the departments and the ambulance and the town. So I think we kind of have to revisit that, you know, as as a group to decide, you know, where we think we should be going. Because if we do, if we do try to pursue a separate P S A or doing the ambulance under sub P S A, that that in itself is a six-month process. Um, I think we have till June. And then we can renew for one year with our current new dance contract. And then, you know, then we're going to have to make a real decision on, you know, what we want to do as a group. So I kind of put it out there for ideas. I mean, one of the things we haven't given a lot of discussion to is if if somehow we do an agreement between the three parties. To look at costs, like use the same companies for all the E M T work, using the same billing company as a group. Um, having the town involved in it, more financially speaking. That, you know, we know with Stony Hill, for instance, because of the billing issues up there and. I should, I should say that doing the service issues, the the different demographic, that it really has put you guys in a bind. We can't just, you know, the town just can't say, oh, yeah, we're going to cover you for what we want. We have to have some sort of agreement as a group. So I guess I put it to the group, like what what sounds more advantageous? We do a some sort of M O U with the three, the two departments of the town and. Try versus it that way, or do we literally keep pressing along to get another P S A for the ambulance?
So you and I talked briefly about that. So I had a brief conversation with Kitty Hickcock from uh. O E M S, she's our region five coordinator for O E M S. Um, and I talked to her just a little bit today about that and um. Kind of the the summation is with O E M S kind of doing those types of things. As long as we are within the rules and regulations of O E M S, um, generally they don't have an issue with that. You know, that we have some kind of, and we, I think we used to do some cross staffing across, we have, we'll have to submit a roster every year for our licensing. You know, so we could show each other's uh membership on that roster, things of that nature. So. Um, you know, I think that's an important part of it is, you know, what is, how does O E M S look at this and kind of. The basic is, you know, we do something that we all agree on, that the all the agencies agree upon, and it and it seems to be. Within the legal confines, uh, you know, for the most part, you know, it's it's taken up with them and looked at. As long as we're working together and we're providing the service, you don't really have a big issue with that. So at least that part of it I know is good, good to know that, you know. Kind of moving forward. But yeah, I mean, things like you said, like, you know, using the same staffing company for the B L S service and and the same billing company, you know. Getting those to be the same agency that we all use, um. And then maybe even, you know, going forward, keeping the model the way it is, you know, with. With B L S ambulances and a and a fly car, but maybe going out for a request for proposals or one staffing company. Provide all those terms to provide the paramedic and the and the E M S, you know, based on the schedule that we we come up with. So. Like, those are things we should, we should just look at and wrap our head around it some. Some prices.
We could also then, I mean, if we're doing it all together, we could look at doing A L S bus if we think that's advantageous to. Quality, you know, the the service for the town and the money reimbursement, but we could do that anytime then. Right?
A L S is the way to go. On the ambulances, the medics on the ambulances, it's one less person.
Yeah.
We're hiring on the ambulance.
Yeah.
You know?
I've heard, also heard, we we had discussions about keeping one fly car instead of two then.
Well, there's actually three.
True.
Because you've got two plus supervisor, so you keep one. The other two could either be sold or maybe one of those each goes to the fire departments. To replace aging vehicles that we have now. Because town's already bought and made for.
With um. With, I mean, I with our group just kind of discussing what's what's the appetite for including Redding? I know there's been a lot of, you know, we can let them go do their own thing, or we could all do something together for that matter.
I think at the very least, it needs to be renegotiated, because I think it's a little bit one-sided. To their advantage.
Right, it is.
I would agree with Chief Baker and say that. Uh, and we talked about it before, you have to look at the calls for service because those medics are running a lot to Redding where they're not here in Bethel. And I am a strong advocate of having our own service in Bethel. I think we should set up a model that's us and then see. If maybe we can include Redding. I don't think we should set up a model that includes Redding initially. We should set up a metal model that's Bethel and Stony Hill encompasses the town about first.
Well, if we were to have those discussions at least. Then the then. Redding and us would all be. We'd be negotiating with whatever company together versus negotiating separately. That's what's gotten us in a quandary, I think, because right now we negotiate separately. You know, they do their own thing, and so they're getting, we believe, a better deal than we are with respect to the vendor. Versus if we all kind of get it and and talk about it, at one point, then we make a decision. Whether or not it's advantageous to help.
And I think that modeling works if we keep it a paramedic intercept program where the medics in a separate fly car.
Yeah.
Because if we put the medics on our ambulances, that kind of aids the ready.
I think we need to follow the Brookfield model and set it up and see if that's going to work for us.
The Brookfield model is a whole nother ballgame.
Because their medics are on the ambulances.
Okay, so I I thought you meant like.
A L S ambulances.
But we say Brookfield model, I'm I'm thinking you're talking about us having our own program. We hire our own, like that's.
That may be the way to go. I mean, they seem to be be making money with it. I seem to be successful with what they're doing.
Well, they're not making money. From the town's perspective, it's a loser. It's it's a lot more money. What they have, they have, they have too many layers of management above two. They're paying the three people a pretty significant amount of money to run the program. Um, and I'm looking at their numbers compared to when when they gave the presentation here, what we pay. And they far pay more, the taxpayer pays much more for that program than I believe what we would pay for. A collaboration of what we're doing now, just looking at the money. I think. But but that could be somewhere we go down the line.
Well, maybe you don't need three people above.
Yeah. Hundred percent.
Like I said, I think we need to look at setting up our own.
Yeah.
Like theirs and then see where we're at, and then see if we need to include writing or not.
Well, as far as setting up our own, then.
You know, part of that, part of that too goes to all the things you said, like, like things that the two departments do.
Yeah.
Now, we just switched over under Justice Leadership to E M S charts. So now we're all, now we're all back on E M S charts, both departments, which is way easier to manage.
And to help with cross staff.
And that's what I was going to say, and to help with cross staffing, that's because it's the same charting system for both departments. So that's, you know, it did, and then they changed it.
Yeah.
You know?
I I just think going the route of creating, whether we create a whole new service or. We combine P S A somehow and and bring it in that way and have the the paramedics on the ambulance, that kind of end goal. I think is very far reaching, and I'm not a hundred percent sure that both. Fire companies are a hundred percent on board, and I think that will be the biggest hurdle of getting. The agreements from them and a hundred percent buy-in and getting those contracts or whatever signed and figured out. So I think in the meantime, if we can come up with some agreements. Where we start to, you know, they still are their own entities, but we're working much more closer together as far as staffing together, using the same. Staffing company, billing companies, et cetera.
Exactly.
I think, I think that will at least maybe help Stony Hill with with some of their billing issues and financial issues, maybe. It'll help kind of, it'll be easier to, I think, report and to see, you know, exactly. How much money is coming in, what the program is really costing. I think having the same staffing company is going to make a big difference. You know, and I I think it's it's worth going out to at least get a bid for those those items, you know. And and take somewhat baby steps. I mean, the program I don't think is broken, you know, and then talking with O E M S. They're glad that we're looking, you know, to to improve it and make it better, but you know, it. It really has to be in a really, really terrible condition for them to really step in and do anything. And we're not there and we don't want to be there, but I think if we start to take some baby steps and.
Yeah.
Do some things together, a little bit more together officially. Kind of.
Well, and and for the record too, and I've said this before, our program is probably the best in the state as far as I'm concerned, like what we do. And what we deliver to our residents is incredible. Never been one doubt about that. I think what it's become is it's become more expensive and we're not able to maybe look at some of the economic. You know, uh, opportunity working together, that's what we're just wanting the efficiency.
The demographics about that's gotten older, it's gotten older. We have an older set here now.
Yeah.
Way more. When you used to just be Simian Road. And basically people that lived in their own homes. Now you've got. You know, Bethel Healthcare. You know, you've got um, right across the street from the firehouse. You know, you finish park, which was always there, but that's a lot of people now that are in need that live there.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, that one's gotten older.
And and E M S, I mean, I think it's, you go anywhere in the state, E M S is not a, you know, revenue generating.
No, it is not.
Now, you can talk about the contract and renew it in June.
I believe it's coming up in June, I'd have to look.
If it was going to be renewed in June, I'd like to see it and out six months after. So that it's not, we're not tied into a whole year. If we come up with something where we're going to transition.
Yeah.
We may be able to do that six months later.
Well, we we listen, we have six months now.
So, you know, or or we renew it now, we go to them now and say, look, we'll renew it till June thirty.
There are in.
Give you a year, a year right now, we'll lengthen it by six months right now.
I'm I'm. I'm not looking at going past the next contract.
Yeah.
I'm looking about putting this together.
Right.
And and starting a negotiation with what it puts our proposal at before next June. Because we we have outs in those contracts anyway, I think it's like thirty days, we have out those contracts and um.
I'm just bringing it up to make sure we can get out because.
We can.
If it's a year and we can be out in six months, I'd rather be out in six months than.
Yeah.
Take it to the whole year just because we weren't paying attention and to make sure we had an out.
Yeah, that's why I think, that's why we're doing this now. I I I think we need to look at it before that, because remember, right now, you know, ours went up a hundred and. Hundred forty grand a year, I think just for the for the uh. Was it the paramedic alone?
Yeah.
So as I mentioned, you know, you guys have a tough time up in Stony Hill because of, you know, all of Bethel Healthcare, like we're we're there, like we have to be something, it's. Things are on fire, so if we can realize any any kind of cost savings, they.
You know. Doing this in baby steps, um, we looking at. Doing a paramedic fly car continuing that before we decide whether we're going to do L S.
I think it sounds like we 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 probably look at the two options whenever we do an R P.
And if we're going to do that and stay with the fly car model. Do we get a um, a contract with Redding? Do we look at what it would be without Redding? Do we look into um, other agencies that could provide the same service or maybe a different price?
Well, I think, because we own the equipment, right? We own the cars, we own the equipment, right? We bought everything, so it's ours.
So we we're 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 going to have to put it out in an R P anyway, because of the amount of money we talked about. So it's going to be out there to see who comes in and. That, but we have to structure it the right way. To make sure we have exactly what we're looking for. So probably the beginning, we're looking for the uh, the current, what we have now. And then probably look at what it would do to get an A L S bus. Um. I'd imagine we will look at an option to have Redding on board.
We're going to stay with the fly car model. I don't see any change to that, if you're looking at how to write a contract. For uh, your number of, you know, I think that primary and backup is the right model, but if we don't share it with Redding. That would probably work a hundred percent.
But but understand too, we're we're talking about E M T too. We're talking about the whole gambit.
Right, well, that's what happened. That's a, that's the second phase of this, you know, as far as the merging without merging the P S A is just merge um. What we have as far as the the charting system, which is already done, then this, yeah.
Right, I I would see us doing.
Because if that can happen without um, merging the P S A's, then that's half the battle.
I don't think we have to merge P S A's into this, because we just have to do agreements with each other.
If you keep the the program the way it is, two B L S ambulances and a paramedic intercept. But we go out for an R P for the staffing component of that, for staffing. The paramedic and the B L S, like, you know, and again, we can staff the B L S any way we want, like we do now, six to six, you know, on the weekends, whatever. But the same staffing company does that and the A L S intercept and keep it, keep. The medic P S A with police department and the two fire departments with their P S A's. But one staffing agency to cover all that. It'd be very interesting to see what that cost is. Because that's that, I don't know, that may be a huge cost savings. We have no idea.
Yeah.
Right, I mean. One company to provide.
I have no.
That service. And then again, getting the billing company done the same, and then that will just. I think that's a good first step.
So chiefs, do you, what do you normally do when you want to engage your membership and bring them along? Do you uh, write to them? Do you meet with them?
Oh, we have meetings, right? Discuss.
Yeah, we have monthly.
We've got everything out front of us. It's the only way. You have to inform your, you have to inform your membership and let them know what's going on. And they have a voice in the vote. All of our members are shareholders of B D F D Inc., and I'm sure it's the same thing at Stony Hill. I'll consider to shareholder. Everybody's got a voice in the vote.
So when you do your contracts, do you bring it up for the the membership? Like when you guys decide to go with whatever company or.
Well, like the staffing?
Yeah.
Yeah, they would, they they would negotiate all that and then they bring it to us on the floor and the final is brought on the floor and we decide. The floor decides.
Right, so in this case. Whatever agreements we come up with as a group that we put an M O U together as a group, that would be the first thing to go to them.
Oh, I, yeah, I'm sure Chief Baker agrees with me. We want to bring that back to our membership.
So then we'd also have to come up with an idea of of how we're going to pick. Well, the way we're picking any entity is to the R P process, a vendor, they have to be okay with that. Right, because as a private organization, you can pretty much pick what you're doing. For us. We have to do R P, and they'd have to be okay with whatever we came up with. There's not.
I'm, yeah, town's doing all the legwork, that's good for us.
Vote in the end, if there's one that wanted to veto, then we're back to the beginning.
Yeah, and then and then it comes back to the cost and it's figuring out.
Yeah.
You know, what that total cost is and how that cost is managed to share between the two fire companies and the town.
And that's figuring out who pays what share of that. One big joint meeting with both companies together, where we can explain it once to everybody.
Right, right.
In the room, and then it can all be discussed.
Sure.
Instead of two separate meetings where maybe the information isn't the same to, you know, see what I'm saying?
Yep.
We're being advocate of, have everybody together, let's explain it once and make sure everybody understands what's going on. Yes, definitely.
Um, to your knowledge, you with your departments is, are the agreements substantially different with your separate E M T providers?
Staffing, I.
Right, so maybe we have to take, we have to take a look at the, take a look at the paramedic one.
See what the cost is, what the, you know, what their.
Yeah, and then we have to come up with an.
Where their extras are, you know, what the, you know, all that stuff.
Yeah.
With the holidays, what they're doing for holidays.
Yeah, we'd have to provide them with a a staffing matrix to know, you know, would you be able to. Come up with enough staffing to provide now for both departments.
Right.
One or the other of the uh.
Yeah.
Staffing.
So, I mean, really the next step would be exploring what it would take to come up with a a memorandum of agreement for the three parties. And what that might look like.
Yeah, what R F P would look like, what what you would want in there.
Right. Which is likely going to be this, pretty much the same contracts we have now. We'd have to have the two contracts compared, just to make sure we catch and everything.
And then the paramedic.
And the paramedic contract compared. Um. So I see our attorney over here looking, any any thoughts on where we're going?
My head is spinning.
But it's a big.
It's a lot, but I think we need to look at the whole picture. That, I really would like to do that. I'd like to look at all the mutual aid agreements. Um, I I believe there are two types, as you said, I I do see Danbury, which is really providing mutual aid to Danbury. I'm sorry, Danbury providing to Bethel, assuming they have resources available to do that. And we've got an obligation to bill or cause that they make for our residents. Then I have this very short and incomplete Newtown agreement, which appears to want to say. If either town provides mutual aid to the other, so so it would have to be obviously signed by both parties to the contract and have signature pages, but. This is an agency agreement, so whatever, but it appears that there's then the kind of agreement where Bethel. And Newtown or Bethel and Brookfield or whatever have an agreement, or maybe it's a multi-town agreement, there's one agreement, everybody signs the same parties to the agreement, say. If called upon to give mutual aid to one of the other member parties, then these rules, and then. We have one agreement to to understand and administer, and that seems to make more sense to me.
Yes.
In the case of Danbury, it's it's more one-sided, they're going to provide mutual aid, they're going to call the shots. It's their agreement, that's what they're saying. We want our mutual aid, this, these are our terms. But I think when other towns are giving and taking that we can, you know, I would be happy to. Give something that we could work with and maybe circulate it, but I would want a committee of maybe a representative of Stony Hill from Bethel. And so that I'm working with an agreement that makes sense to everybody. You're the guys on the ground. I'm. Just trying to make an agreement that makes sense for everybody and have a legal stuff in for the protections for everybody.
Yeah.
So, but I would like um, to have maybe a couple of people working with me that I can talk about what should be in this agreement, what kind of things are. And suggest what I think should be, but I certainly wanted to work for the people that are. At this board.
And O E M S, the Office of Merged Medical Services of the State, I think they have a. A template for a mutually aid agreement that covers just, you know, I'll I'll come to your town to assist and you kind of, you know, that basic mutual aid agreement. For the other towns, that I'm pretty sure they have a template.
If they can, we'll start with that.
Yeah, so I could find that on the website or I might have a copy of it. That to me, you know, because it probably meets all their requirements.
I was saying.
So that would probably be the, they're reinventing the wheel.
Right, right.
Yeah, so I can get you that. I think that might be the route to go.
You know, the Newtown one's kind of weird, it's just kind of almost like it's thrown together. This one here, um, I'll state for the record, I'm extremely disappointed in the city of Danbury, common council that did this. Without ever talking to either fire department. They never talked to us, they never notified us that they were looking to revise this agreement. And then Chief Baker and I just get this in the mail one day, and that's why I forwarded it to you right away, because I'm like, this needs to go. To council, because, you know.
I I, again, I think what their thought process is, they are providing service to us. And they're going to do what they want to do, and they're not going to assume any of the burden for billing residents in Bethel. It's on you folks, and they want to make things clear, um, and they, uh, well, they do what they do. But if you're asking for somebody to do something for you, they're going to really control the contract.
No, I understand that, but but we've got a bunch of adults in the room here. They had a bunch of adults in the room over there. They should have acted like adults and invited us to sit with them in a subcommittee to discuss the current agreement and tell us what they were looking to do. With the new agreement, because this isn't just one agreement either, as as you've seen going through it, it's multiple agreements that they have in here, and it's like. We knew nothing about it, like I said, till we got it in the mail. That's not the way to. To work it, it's really not.
So I can purpose of also that that group, that's a little group I'm talking about, working with me on maybe going to great is to talk about those things, because there is a very extensive HIPAA. Agreement.
Yes.
Um, that we're bound to, as well as the party providing mutually the recipient uh, town and the providing town.
Right.
Uh, and so we have to be sure, because there are a lot of promises, I mean, about systems and ways to protect information, and if you sign the agreement, you got to make sure you're doing those things. Or you have to say to them, we can't do this, we can do that, we can't do that.
Right.
You want to sign onto something you really aren't in a position to be able to do.
Are there, I mean, are there a couple of people from E M S either side that you have in mind that you might connect with their town attorney?
Be interested in seeing through some.
Okay.
I think we'll, um, I'll see if we can get that sample contractor, Tom, and then, um, I think we'll, I'd like to just meet with some people who. Would like to meet and be part of this.
Two for each superman, you want three?
A couple's fine, it doesn't have to be a lot of people.
I would say it's probably going to be Jess and uh, who's our E M S captain.
Okay.
And I think our E M S director. Or or somebody else.
Can I speak?
You know.
But you're in the.
And that would be, yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, I would also consider Susan Everdisco.
Right, our president. I mean, that would be, you know, those would be, uh, those three, I would give you two of those people.
And if I may, also with that, I don't know if we have an agreement going into Danbury, but we go there.
I was going to ask, actually, I was going to ask.
That's not really with this agreement, since I read the budget agreement to be pretty one-sided.
Yeah, it is one-sided.
That contract is mostly. A billing and a payment contract rather than a mutual aid agreement contract, that's what it is.
So there, do we have a mutual aid contract with Danbury?
We'll have very many.
At some point, aside from this.
I think we need to have all of the contracts. I think we need to have all of the contracts.
Yes.
All the contracts are or want them to be, so even if we don't have one with Brookfield, we might have one with Brookfield.
If we have one.
Then.
For us going to there.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Well.
I don't have one, but I know.
Okay. Is anybody know?
I requested that information. When we sent our. Official response back. City of Danbury. If there's an existing contract. With you. Please get this covered.
Okay, well, that's the problem.
I'll check, I'll check, again, when we're done with this meeting.
So we'll just again. All the mutual aid, just make sure it's all the way it should be, right? Everything, contracts are are done between the parties. I'll bet parties are protected.
And then we charge them three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
If we go up there, we charge them three hundred dollars too.
Right, yeah, I know that was.
Wait.
You've reached out to the state about mutual aid agreements. Did they talk to you about who the actual parties in mutual aid agreements should be?
No, I mean, it's, I just know that it would came up in the past and they have a template out there, so I don't know.
Yeah.
It's probably usually signed.
I don't know, I don't know, I guess, my my guess, listen, a lot of things. Have just kind of come through and people just sign stuff and send it on. And and to your point. A department doesn't have the ability to lock us into something or indebtedness or anything else. So maybe as we look at these agreements, maybe it's gonna be a party between. You know, the fire department. Or EMS and the town and the other person, like, I think we'll have to look at. Right, we'll have to look at those agreements to just make sure that we're. All on the same page, whatever, you know, so I think Melanie's gonna come up with a little bit of a standard agreement that we're gonna start using from now.
Right, to that end, because I would want Melanie to review it first.
Melanie will review.
Yeah, I don't have.
I mean, that's why I.
Authority to sign anything, and there was apparently one side.
Yeah.
Prior.
Yeah, but I I haven't found it.
By someone.
You know, we've looked.
I don't know that. Companies really. All the parties to be involved in management, so. Yeah, we have. The companies have agreements in town and Bethel. Provide services. Your dispatch sends us places. Because you have a mutual aid agreement. Between the towns to save all of us. Okay?
Okay.
And. So I don't know that the mutual aid agreements involve.
Yeah.
Fire departments per se. When you send us to another place, because we don't really have to be safe when we go, not being dispatched, we go, we visit. We're trying to help each other out. So I just, I'm.
Yeah.
Love counsel to actually say.
Yeah.
Who this party, who should be part of these things?
Well, she will. Listen, no matter what, it'll be the town.
That's what I was thinking, it's like, we'd have a meeting with the town and you would have an agreement with the other towns.
Let's see, let's see how we end up just.
But I don't. Because if it if involves us again. Then we'll have to involve not only town attorneys, but companies.